We always start our meetings with our invitation of our friends, who are our chaplain.
Precious fathers, once again, always come. I'm glad that I heard my head is by and I say, "Oh, God, we want to thank you." Allow us to be here this afternoon to Allen County Fitness. And we thank you for the audience, everyone that has showed up this afternoon. And we thank you for how you have blessed this county from last month until this one. Trust and pray that you're going to continue to watch your blessing in this county, in your name, in all the prayers, amen.
Number two on the agenda, approval of a agenda that requires the most, well, most of the approved agenda.
I think motion through the agenda.
This is it. And, uh, most have been made in this second. All in favor, raise your hand. Now, number three, approval of minutes of the seven twenty-two fifteen meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I make that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a second. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. We're down to number four, resolutions. And, uh, we're going to do the Dylan Dixie Darling eight U first because they're young girls, and then we'll do the old girls from Loudoun. If you could read the resolutions for the eight U.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, you want to go ahead and approve the resolution?
Okay.
Make motion that we approve the resolution for the Dylan Dixie Darling and Loudoun Angels.
Is that second?
Our second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and I'll read the resolution. Whereas sports activities play an integral part in teaching preparing of young people for the challenges of life, whereas the city of Dillon has developed an exceptional Dixie softball sports program for you, for our youth. Whereas the Dixie Darling's division has won three Dixie Darling State tournaments for the past three years. Congratulations. Whereas the Dixie Darling's eight U twenty-fifteen softball team did win the Dixie Darling Softball World Series on August fifth, twenty fifteen. Whereas the Dixie Dillon County Council believes that this accomplishment should be recognized by Dillon County. Now therefore it be resolved that Dillon County through the Dillon County Council does congratulate the members of the Dixie Dar, uh, Dillon Dixie Darling's eight U softball team for winning the twenty-fifteen Dixie Darling Softball World Series on August fifth, twenty fifteen. Be it further resolved that Dillon County through the Dillon County Council does further congratulate the entire team, other, other workers, parents, especially fans and many volunteers without whom this accomplishment could not have been achieved. This resolution is passed this, the twenty-sixth day of August by Dillon County Council and be duly assembled.
If you want to go ahead and read that.
We'll go ahead and get, we'll go ahead and get through yourself, and then I'll read, I'll read the latter, how about that?
Before we get started, uh, I was just thinking about when this, when this, when y'all won the World Series, if we can have two teams from Dillon County win, I said, "That's enough." And then I said, "No." I started thinking about it. It's, it's possible because I know who we'll be dealing with. These children have some of the best grandparents, they have the best parents you will find anywhere. And they must have their best coaches in the nation. They were skilled, uh, was skilled player, they did real good, they set their goals high, they met their goals, they were coached, and they worked hard. We're going to give y'all some nice plaques today, and I hope y'all hang them up, and every time you see them, you say, "I can set my goal in life, I can do anything." And you can, if you work hard, I guarantee you can get anything you want. Okay, Stevie Bryce is going to give out the Dillon flag. Ian McKee.
What have, what have you said up there?
Chloe Powell. Uh, Lili Bennett's not here today. And my little sack of peanuts here are dry. And Matthew King. Y'all come back, go back. Y'all done something to string y'all, both teams here.
I'm going to read, I'm going to read the res, I'm going to read the resolution for the, um, for the Loudoun team. Whereas sports activities play an integral part in the teaching and preparing of young people for challenges of life, whereas the town of Loudoun has developed an exceptional softball, uh, Dixie softball sports program for our youth, whereas the Loudoun Angels ten U twenty-fifteen softball team did win the Dixie Angels softball World Series on August fifth, twenty fifteen, whereas the Dillon County Council believes that this accomplishment should be recognized by Dillon County, and now therefore it be resolved that Dillon County, through the Dillon County Council does congratulate the twenty-fifteen members of the Loudoun Angels ten U softball team for winning the twenty-fifteen Dixie Angels softball World Series championship on August fifth. Be it further resolved that Dillon County through the Dillon County Council does further congratulate the entire team, the coaches, the other workers, the parents, the fans, and the many, many volunteers without whom the accomplishment could not be achieved. This resolution is passed twenty-sixth day of August by Dillon County Council in a meeting duly assembled.
Number twelve, Elizabeth Fram. Number seven, Reagan Buthay. Number eight, Savannah Sherman. Number five, Dixie Collins. Number double, at least that. Number twenty-one, David Duck. Number forty-four, Ava Rogers. Okay, and we're going to recognize the coaches. And, uh, Jay Cox. A little bit, a little bit, cut me a stand eye.
the All-Stars. Come here, Grace. There's a, there's a girl at church, her name's Julia Fulmer. She's fighting cancer. And during, during our All-Star tournament, this yellow flower, all the girls wore these yellow flowers, and to represent her, because yellow and the flower itself represent children's cancer. And every tournament we played, we handed out a little bracelet. It's got her name, it says Team Julia, and it's got a favorite Bible verse on it. Every team we played in All-Stars got one of these, coaches included. So I just want to let you know a little background. It was a special thing for us, it brought a team together. It was big to us. And I appreciate it all.
I'd like to say just congratulations to both, both teams. What y'all done is all, it is very, very rare. Uh, especially two teams at the same county. Uh, I had the pleasure of going along for the ride. I watched both teams win. Oh, I had the pleasure of coaching, coaching some of these girls on this team, and even one on the other team, on the Loudoun team, so, uh, it made me proud. And, uh, I knew both teams had a chance to win it all. I, I told these guys, we've been talking about giving y'all the money, I said, "They're going to be there for a while." I knew they, I knew y'all going to be there for a while. And, uh, I'm just, uh, I'm glad the council voted to give y'all the money. But, uh, I want to thank one guy especially. Robbie Cowell was instrumental in getting y'all the money. He, he worked hard. But I'm very proud of both teams, and, uh, very proud of the ones I've, I've had to play with and coach y'all, so. And I played against, coached against them, so. It, it's been fun, and I'm very proud of both teams, because I know how hard it is to do what you did. And I just wanted to let y'all know that. Good job.
Say all the y'all in this Loudoun show, the champion. Y'all will have one more.
It's going to be fun. Thank y'all.
Before y'all leave, I want to make a call. We're going to come down in a minute, we're going to leave there and make the presentation. Oh, Stevie Bryce, if he'll come down. I just want to say while he's coming, uh, and I know these coaches will agree, uh, that this foundational, uh, recreation is very important. I just see it even in life, as they get older, that, uh, they'll be very unfamiliar in college, and high school and college and beyond. I just thought it would be fitting to say that. Just wanted to present this to you, and to Stevie Bryce, congratulate you for everything that you've done, sort of the recreation and that. If you'll come down. So also I want to, uh, present this to you, to recognize everything that you've done as a chair, and spoke to the council as a whole, to make sure that everything was successful.
We're getting ready to get started on, uh, floor seats. It's a resolution of Harbors Hope Food Bank.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we got a request from Harbors, uh, Harbors and Hope Food Bank, uh, for its work bringing awareness to the issue of hunger in South Carolina, to recognize hunger awareness in Action Month. And, uh, I think that's, you're not going to try to put it in the newspaper to outline this resolution here, so I will read, I will read it in two pages, but, uh, basically that's what it is.
I know they've done one for y'all for the people in Dillon County. I'm trying to, how many thousands they feed, uh, do we have a motion to approve that resolution?
I make that motion, Mr. Chair.
In a second. All in favor? We're down to number five, new business, recycle center, revise policy relating to municipal citizens. Uh, I might ask Robbie Cowell to just give a little input on that, he, he does more about it than anybody else.
I want to make a motion that the city in Dillon, the town of Loudoun, and the town of Loudoun, be able to go to the orders office.
So venue is that.
Orders office to get a sticker, no charge, and they can use our convenience items.
Well, after, he, he just talked to a bunch of people that live in Towne, and I was talking to some people that live in Towne, so Loudoun. And it might be some people in the county that have to pay the ninety dollars, feel like they're getting shortchanged, but they're not, because the people inside the city in Loudoun are paying the same mileage on their houses and, and property as the people out of the county, and they're getting a little benefit to most of your police and fire protection and everything is done by the city. And, uh, I feel like, I don't feel like they're going to use it at all, except maybe on around holidays, whatever, if they're sort of piled up and, and their dumps is going to hold what they need to hold. And Loudoun Lakeview, they don't have means of disposable appliances and furnishing stuff that'll give them somewhere to put it, but, uh, that's just my opinion on him. Uh, you make that motion.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. F, or Mr. Cowell? Could you tell me briefly, do the citizens and the city, are they paying, it sounds like to me they're paying county and city taxes, would that be true?
Yes, sir.
Well, if that be the truth, then I'm, I'll second that motion.
Okay. I want a favor, raise your hand.
Question, last vote.
Okay. All again?
Question. I, I, I just got a question before we go through it, I feel like I'm going through it. Uh, but I wish our, our county alternative was here, is it here? I'm looking at the legal ramifications of this thing. Have we researched all that yet before we go through with this? Because what are you going to do if someone come up and said, "I'm not going to pay this because this ninety dollars, because you let the people in the city do it free"? How are you going to handle that?
They'll have to get, get you the stickers, I guess, as they mentioned before. I mean, you know.
I'm saying, how would you justify them? Them, they're paying free, the people in the county having to pay for it.
But they even see the paper, those sites, trash trucks, everything we got, and they ain't getting nothing out of it, the fire service and everything.
Well, they getting something.
What are they getting?
Right now, are they, are they paying any more taxes?
Yeah.
No, it ain't got nothing to do with the city. We know if you live in the city, you make that decision on your own. You know what's going to go along with living in the city, that you're going to pay double taxes, that's something that you, you decide to do. But I'm just saying, and I know it's going to go along with, but I'm just saying, is there a legal thing about charging one citizen one thing, and another citizen getting free? That's all I'm saying. Don't you think we need to get some legal, uh, advice on this before we push it through?
Here's what I think, and that's a good, uh, question, but my thing would be the way I approach it works. And I have, I don't know whether there any legal ramifications about that. Certainly I'm no lawyer, but however, I see it's fair, if you paying county and city taxes, okay, we can eliminate that they live in the city, they pay city tax, that I can embrace. But if they paying county taxes, then to me, they ought to be, uh, they ought to have privileges also to the county facilities, if they paying county taxes.
The people in the county is paying ninety dollars to use the trash site.
People in Towne, they won't be paying anything, because they're paying town taxes, and we are furnishing, uh, most of your police protection and fire protection, we pay for, and other services that go into people in the county, but we're not doing anything for people in Towne.
And they're paying taxes to help.
Yeah, they pay the same amount of taxes on houses.
I think they ought to add a right.
Well, I'm with you, Chairman, but I don't think they would use it nowhere near as much, because they're paying for city pickups.
Yeah, they're going to use it.
And they're going to use it. Only thing, only thing I think they would use it for, like holidays, or maybe they have something big they need to take to one of them.
That's what I feel like.
Well, how did this, this DKA come about in the beginning? I, I was just coming on when this thing started, so I'm in a discussion about why wasn't necessary to charge ninety dollars to any county citizen? Because everybody pays county taxes, and, uh, why wasn't necessary to charge the people that live in the county ninety dollars to use those facilities? And again, there had to be a reason behind it.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
I think it mostly keeps people out of North Carolina.
I wouldn't. Only meant for Dillon County citizens alone. And what I understand, if you're on the surface, it would be for Dillon County citizens only. But that's what brought the people coming across the line of dumping the trash. And I think it was engineered to kind of, you know, balance that, kind of type that issue.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, they're still coming across the line of dumping the trash, because nobody really is trying to put a system in place that works. It was researched and put in place, and it was a total failure of chain command to carry it out. The people from North Carolina are still bringing trash to Dillon County, people from Marburg, Marion, and Oak Ridge are still bringing trash to Dillon County. But let me say one quick thing. I was here when the trash system was put in place in ninety-four. Uh, they paid, they came up with the idea, the city, the people in the city pay a twenty-two dollar fee, most cities are in that area, and they get water, sewer, trash picked up for twenty-two dollars or twenty-two.
What's your, the students, the teachers, all the teachers.
Most of that water sewer, but the trash is about twenty-two dollars a month, and they pick it up at your front door. People in the county have to drive and take their own, they don't have front door service. But we're all paying the same county tax, the people in the city pay fifty-seven dollars roughly for city taxes. For their city, they have their fire service, they have a lot of police service and all that. The people in the county pay a ninety option.
That's the thing I can't understand now, if, if the people in the city is paying an extra tax, more, you know, than more than the county, and I say, "Yeah, go, go with it." But if they, I mean, not just because of being two taxes, that's something that you have to weigh out when you're living in the city, you know that that's going to happen when you move in the city, you're going to pay two taxes. But if you're paying the same county taxes, probably the taxes as someone in the county, and you getting a privilege free that they're not getting, I don't know if I could, well, I could justify that.
Like, like you just said, they got, people in the cities got pickup right there at the house. I don't think they're going to stop using that to run your county.
And then too, if you look at it from the standpoint where, I, I agree with, if they're paying county taxes, they should use facilities, but if you know you got people coming across that line, they paying that, now you going to stop your people that's at least paying something? You know, you get, that's the issue there, I mean, don't make sense.
With your fire protection there, you know, the city helps buy that fire truck, but the fire truck can't help them, you know? Or the police, you know, deputies. They can't put us in any kind of way, I mean, let them at least have an option to do it. You know, we're going to do it enough, at least they got the option.
We got this problem with people coming from, uh, other counties and other states dumping, and we're now forcing that, we've got some big problems, and somebody is looking through a change in the way we're doing things, somebody got the enforcement, they think they don't have a sticker, shouldn't be able to do it.
Should be able to do it.
Well, how important is that ninety dollars towards Dillon County taxes that people in the county pays every year to dump, to use those dumpsters? Uh, the revenue that comes off of that, how important is that? I mean, I, I said, drop it off, drop it off.
It's used to help pay for leak, carrying your trash to Lake County landfill.
Yeah, if you want to do it a fair way, let's go away with the ninety dollars for the country people to raise everybody's taxes to the same level.
I didn't have.
And you got it, don't you? If you want to play devil's advocate, to see what they have there. And that eight hundred thousand dollars the county people are paying right now.
I don't think we playing devil's advocate, I think if you know you got people that's not paying anything, nothing at all, privilege coming over here doing what they want to dump the trash, but you got people that's at least paying something, give them at least the option to use that, that side of the hill. That's the way I see it.
Those people in the cities can't be blocked, they're burning this county building today.
And we've already voted on this thing a lot.
I got the motion, one second, and then you come on.
Okay. All in favor of letting people in the city? All again? One again, three again, okay? We're down, um...
You have five B.
You have five B Recreation Proposal Proposal, going in forty-five, Lakeview Infrastructure, and, um, it requires a motion.
That's true, we got...
That's true, we got a quest from, uh, Lakeview, Town of Lakeview for equipment, which is moving out of Bobby Moon, and I got the quest, and the equipment they're looking at, and it shows the equipment's twenty-four something, twenty-four, five, four fifty-one, forty-two, and then to install it, which I recommend that they do install it, because it's kind of complicated, and it'd be sixty-eight, fifty-five, so it would be both those.
How much is it?
Okay. It'll be twenty-four, four fifty-one, forty-two, and then sixty-eight, fifty-five, figure, and that would be...
That's coming out of the infrastructure, what it is designated for Lakeview, huh?
For Lakeview, the Lakeview infrastructure fund, and...
We got the money.
It'll be given to the Town of Lauta, the Town of Lauta will secure the...
Town of Lakeview.
Town of Lakeview, I'm sorry, Town of Lakeview.
We have a motion to approve the Recreation Equipment. Is that settled?
Settled, settled.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
We're down to five C, Recreation Equipment.
Okay, we have the, um, street ball tournament, um, that Jean-Baptiste did, that Randy Goins a hundred dollars, Archie Scott a hundred, Stevie Grass, and the Kelp League, probably maybe, if you can put it next week. Um, and we have, uh, Bobby Moon's Recreation, um, a dozen men and a dozen women softball football. Manning Brothers Church, um, Manning Brothers Church of Dillon, uh, where the Reverend Rodney L. McHorkle, Senior Pastor, is sponsoring a fifty states fundraiser, funds generated by this effort, and we use for church and free practice, um, they'd like a donation, if y'all would like to give one, in the Recreation.
Make it out.
What was that, the angry? Yeah, so, hundred dollars.
A hundred thirty.
Hundred dollars.
And we have, y'all should have all the certificates, but, um, there's for the Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center, um, they are requesting funds to support, uh, the Boys Empowerment Summit, which will be held on September twenty-sixth from eight to three, and the summit will benefit Melview from thirteen to twenty-one years of age throughout Dillon County and beyond. Um, each attendee will receive a summit t-shirt, a sports bag, educational motivational reading material, as well as breakfast and lunch. Uh, we are asking that Dillon County Council and Dillon community support this workshop called the Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center of Florida.
Mr. Smith, I think I want to say something.
Mr. Chairman, I thank for the opportunity, uh, I'm the president of the Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center, on the twenty-sixth of, of September, we're having a, a male, uh, youth empowerment summit, it's for all males in Dillon County and surrounding areas from ages of thirteen to twenty-one years of age, uh, we're doing the youth empowerment summit from eight o'clock to three o'clock, and it, it's entail a whole variety of subject matters that we are talking about, where young males need to hear, if they have, if they heard it before, they need to hear it again at some point of their lives. Uh, we would give them breakfast, lunch, and snack, uh, t-shirts, uh, summit t-shirt, reading material as well, um, we went before the city council, they gave a, a thousand dollar donation toward this summit as well, and we came, asked the, uh, the county council to at least meet that, that donation that the city council made, if as high a call possible. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, any question, I'd be glad to answer that, but this is a motion, uh...
I'll make a motion to relax what the city council.
Okay. I'll second it, sir.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, we need, thank you for, and the, um, the council for their consideration of this, yes, sir.
Let me make this clear, man, let me make this clear, let's make this crystal clear, understand what click, that the county is gonna give them a thousand dollars.
Not, not out of recreational, not out of...
Right, okay.
That's the same thing as you had to get it, that's...
Right, but Dillon County gonna do it in the county perspective, not from our recreational.
Yeah, that's the way I understood, that's the way I...
Okay, that's what I'm just gonna make clear.
Now, Mr. Vice, if you, if you want to, uh, the individual make an individual donation, we will also accept that.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, sir, any question, I'd be glad, uh, in fact, the council can sit in on our empowerment summit if they choose to do so, or whether, the date, the date is on Saturday, September the twenty-sixth, it would be held at Brandon's Banker Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're down to five B, Dan Bruce, who's gonna talk, they can tell us about the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, gentlemen, the sheet that I gave you is the Pledge of Allegiance, as was told to Red Skelton during his grade school by one of the teachers. Uh, the only thing I can say, you'd probably say it's missing under God, under God was put in later, just a file, and the part that I have outlined in yellow is just sort of preamble to what I wanted to say. The, to the republic, republic is a sovereign state in which power is invested into the representatives chosen by the people together, and the government is the people, and it's from the people to the leaders, not from the leaders to the people, so I'd just like to put that in there.
Let me ask you a question, sir, I know you're not finished, but are you, are you reversing, or is it reversing the traditional Pledge of Allegiance? I mean, is this the same, is it reversing it a little?
No, that's way the Pledge of Allegiance was explained by a teacher to Red Skelton in his class many, many years ago. Gentlemen, it took over a year to get the flag, but it's pulled, however, the Pledge of Allegiance has taken quite a long time, that was about, started about four years ago. And I can't see why some people have given lame excuses not to include the pledge. I think it's time for Americans to view both the flag and the pledge as a symbol of freedom in the United States and the world. Uh, a little bit of my background, uh, my parents fostered my love for the country, and their country, they both immigrated to the United States, both had eight great educations. Now, my father was a very strong-willed man, but he said that during his lifetime, there were two, two of his many proudest moments of being an American, one is when I joined the Marine Corps, and two, when I graduated from college, thanks to the GI Bill USA. My father refused to speak his native language out in public, he would do it at home, but not in public, and he chastised people for not learning the language of our country. And an immigrant, an immigrant, an eighth grade education can show this kind of love and respect for the symbols of this country, why can't others, who were born in the USA, to do the same? So in summation, I'd like to say that, and I'd like to ask you as individuals in a group, make the pledge a part, an important part of these meetings, thank you.
Mr. Bruce, let me ask you a question, uh, again, I'm confused here, it's been a minute, I reckon since I said pledge, so, but I mean, what happened to One Nation Under God, you know, and Lieutenant Justice Ball, and what happened to that? I mean, I remember...
One Nation Under God was ended from...
Would you let me finish, sir? Would you let me finish? I don't, I didn't see all that either, because that was traditional, I don't know about Red Skeleton, I wasn't back there doing that time, but this is kind of, I mean, I'm confused what I'm saying, sir, that's all I'm saying, I'm confused.
What I'm saying, Under God was put in after this was, uh, put out by Red Skeleton.
Mr. Bruce, um, I mean, I live here, whenever you come, for, for, 'cause I haven't had a lame excuse, but, uh, I'm all for saying Pledge of Allegiance, but I'm for saying the traditional Pledge of Allegiance.
Right.
One Nation Under God, and I, and that's what I'm for.
That's the way...
And I had no problem with saying that, never me.
That is the individual, uh, under God is the, uh, probably what I thought, motion I was talking about. It was, it's, I think, uh, about thirty years ago, thirty-four years ago, it was installed in the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is not the pledge, or at least that you would question that, we said.
No, that's, yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's the one Red Skeleton, I ain't never got the red, you know? Well, I, I, that's a little more workable, I apologize for a little bit, but right now, I couldn't take that.
Thank you for the information, Mr. Bruce, we have a motion that, uh, we said the Pledge of Allegiance before every meeting, I think it's a good idea, the judicial Pledge of Allegiance.
I made the motion, we scared, put the pledge, say the Pledge of Allegiance at the start of each meeting, but...
Is it the traditional one, or...
Traditional Pledge of Allegiance, yeah.
I'll second it.
I, I, I'll third it.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thanks, sir. I remember Skelton, I was back there, I was...
Okay, uh...
Mr. Franklin.
Before we move ahead, um, there was never a motion made for the Recreation Quest, request, we might go back and make a motion to approve all the ones that were read out.
And there was one, there was one that we didn't get to, um, that's the city of Dillon Municipal Golf Course, that, um, Harold Lyd was getting a hundred dollars out of his account.
For a term, that they had. I'll make the motion, should we approve it?
Do I second?
Second, all Recreations Quest, I second.
All in favor of the Recreation Quest, I'm sorry, I missed. Uh, we down to five E, or...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna, um, basically, I got Mr. Barry here, gentleman of mine, elect going to executive session with Mr. Barry, and all of everything, but I, I don't think any action needs to take in this thing.
We have a motion to go in and take the set.
We have one on your table.
That's fine.
You didn't want to hold it to the end, or...
We hold it to the end, that's fine, either way, we hold it to the end.
He's gonna hold it to the end, depending on the season. Depending on the season, financial support.
Okay, we hear that?
Yeah, he's gonna skip it to the end.
Okay, I'm guaranteeing, it's broke, I had to send it off. Okay, so I'm sorry, we're going down to number six, uh, then we need to do a financial report.
Okay, uh, currently, this is for the month of July, one month into the fiscal year, uh, we currently have two hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars revenue, more revenues than expenses, or that can be a little bit of such a change, I think we've got some revenues gonna have to be approved in previous year, but, uh, as of, brought out, that's what it is.
Anybody have any questions, is that, I know it's recent. We appreciate the information. See, you're gonna go in and do the ordinance?
Yeah, let's do the ordinance, we'll represent.
We got a, uh, we got a reading, ordinance direction, implementation of real property review assessment to Dillon County be delayed for one year, as authorized by section twelve, there's forty-three, there's two seventeen B, South Carolina Code of Laws, nineteen seventy-six, as amended, that's the part of the motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do I second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we're down to seven B, first reading, and ordinance authorized pursuant to title twelve, chapter forty-four of the Code of Laws of the State of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended, the execution delivered with a fee in lieu of added parole taxes agreement by and between Dillon County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county as Project Beacon Eggs, as sponsor of more, more sponsors, affiliates, and other related models.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do, if it's appropriate, is that, uh, we go into it, and when we do go into executive session, I'd like for Mr. Neil, who's our economic development director, to help, he and I explain that to the council, before any council, before the council takes action, so we'll discuss in executive session, the council deems it appropriate, we'll come out and take first reading on it, if not, then we'll go from there, but I have Mr. Neil here, please.
And we're going to executive session now?
No, we'll keep on...
Okay, we're going down to...
Yeah, we're going down to...
The seven C, first reading, and ordinance authorized in issuance in sales of not exceeding one million four hundred thousand, general obligation bonds, CB twenty sixteen of Dillon County, South Carolina, fixing disforming details of the bonds, providing for repayment of the bonds, authorized into Chillicothe County Council and County legislators, determining certain matters related to the bond, providing for payment of the bond, the disposition of the proceeds of the bonds, and other matters relating there too, and that's the part of the motion, this is the first reading, two more readings after this, and we pass, and we pass this today. We have a motion to do the first reading?
I'll make that motion, we on the first reading.
Do I second it, sir?
I'll second.
Okay, then, the motion made, I'm swish, and discussing.
Ah, yeah, what are we getting this bond for? Got a shithead sheet, new package, it's toward the back end of it.
Read it out, we're going to...
On seventy, keeping the packet on seventy, should be right before then.
Read, please.
Okay, um, anyway, this just proposed a amount where we're paying on spending money, uh, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, this drug, reimbursement from the Judicial Center, uh, we got computer upgrades, I think, both Danny's computers, if Danny's here, if you need any more further explanation on that, but, the switches that we have are not encrypted, not slides, make us go toward an encrypted system, get all our switches up to date, it's about three hundred fifty-three thousand, uh, one was a rust truck for, uh, station four. And at least it's about thirty-seven thousand, one eighty-three, we got figured out so far, and probably have some return fees, such as, we respond, so we've been over that much on the judicial bill.
Richard, didn't we already agree first part of the year, to get some extra money of number ten on that judicial center?
Yeah, that's, that's...
So we borrow again?
No, um, actually, the judicial system bill, it costs about five million, we have a, got one G of bomb for one and a half, and another G of bomb for two and a half, comes about four million.
Okay, but then we just agreed, I mean, vote on it to do that the first part of this year.
I just think we putting scissors a lot of dead. You made a, you made a statement, reimbursement for the Judicial Center...
Yeah.
That troubles me, um, when we move, we move money from somewhere, and you putting it in the bank, is that what you're doing, or what?
No.
What are you doing, what you, what are you reimbursing?
Basically, the money we spent, you know, to cover extra costs when we did the change orders and all this stuff.
You get money to come out of the reserve fund and go back to the reserve fund?
That's, I just asked that man that question. Thank you, Mr. Bruce, you told me you wouldn't tell me, you took money and you put money back, that's all, that's the question I asked.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they just put money back.
But you wouldn't tell me what you told me, that's why.
No, I just...
The order's cut, no? If the motion is passed, then all in favor, of course, raise your right hand, all opposed? Say, you'll say, oh, you opposed, okay, are there, um, began indeed, first reading, and ordinance authorized in Dillon County, South Carolina, to execute and deliver an equipment lease purchase agreement, twenty fifteen, in amount not exceeding seven hundred fifty thousand, between the county and the lease, thereof, defrayed the cost of acquiring certain equipment and other matters relating there too.
Sure, I got Mr. Gary's handling that, okay, um, and the way proceeds are going, uh, I mean, three new amendments is, uh, I think we've really looked at some remails, and they're about ninety-seven thousand, uh, check another company out in Monroe, Golden Carolina, there were a hundred and ten thousand for brand new and all the way through, uh, there's a dip, uh, eighteen hundred dollars, they can go ahead and mount a narcotic box in the truck, Randy said he wanna get that put in there when we got the trucks, uh, the other one is a mac roll-off truck for the landfill, is about a hundred and seventy thousand, um, the other one is, uh, Sun is equipped at nine-one-one, this one... Um, the other one is, uh, Son is equipped, that's nine-one-one, this one, this don't be quite that much, I just got through the topic with Sonny. Uh, that's one we paying twenty percent reimbursement, I think Sonny can see it came up about nine hundred and seventy thousand, and a part of that will be probably less than two hundred thousand. And the other one is a new truck for code enforcement, where they got the other one wrecked.
What we, what we, this is the first reading, and I'm gonna ask the chairman of, um, Archie Scott, he's the chair, he's the chairman, to look into the, um, to look into these amulets, and also the brush trucks, let us have a meeting, make the recommendations before the second reading, and also for Chairman Moody to get roads and bridges, and, um, decide that this is actually what they want, that it's a roll-off shop, and everything in the right process, uh, this is the first reading, we got two, two more readings to change it, but we need to get the first reading, and we have a motion to do the first reading.
I make the motion, you can have the first reading.
Is this second?
I'll second.
I second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Richard, we be leasing this stuff, we won't go against our debt, because I think we getting pretty close on eight percent debt.
Yeah, the lease purchase will not go against...
That's what I know it don't, but would that be the reason we were leasing it? Because I talked to the bond attorney, he said we was getting close to what we get on the bond.
Yeah, we are.
Says our hands be tired.
Right, but that was something with one point fours, will go against that.
Make it clear, we really got scissors in a mess up here.
Well, now, we, we got...
We can't borrow no more.
Well, we, we, we got cash for the handle, I mean, that's amazing.
To make the payments.
Yeah.
Okay, but I just want everybody to know we bought a borrowed out. Question, Mr. Gadd, so ask your question, please. Uh, your code enforcement vehicle, were you insurance paying anything on it?
That was about thirty-five hundred.
Vehicle was wrecked, right?
Right.
And who was at fault, did anybody do?
That was...
Oh, it wasn't our fault.
Okay.
So that thirty-five hundred is paying, that come off the price that you borrowed in? Wasn't that budget, did you start with, when we did the budget, that you, you put a vehicle in there for?
We talked about it, we did, we did a budget, we put it in the lease purchase like we're supposed to.
Now, I think the truck is wrecked.
Yeah, but it's got about two hundred fifty thousand miles on it, put any more money in.
Anyone else, Chris?
Let me ask one quick thing, um, the amulets, if you do buy new amulets, are we going to retain ownership of the old ones, are we going to sell them, or do you not?
We're probably, so my, my, I probably, the older ones, we're probably going to cycle those out.
Do anybody know whether or not they're in such severe shape that they can't be used at all as a spare, or anything?
They probably always use them as a spare, but I think Randy says he's got some of that two hundred thousand miles on them.
And we're ready to, and we can find out, and then we'll do something, right, the main, the second reading.
We'll do that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All in favor, Chris? We have a motion, if that's second, all in favor, raise your right hand, this is first reading. Okay, all opposed? Okay, all right, there, the T and T looks, I mean, uh, chairmen of these committees will have a meeting between the next week and this week.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We're down to eight A, a form, Dillon County Planning Commission members, District Six, Robert Cowell, that's a form. I don't have anybody that's... I already done have that, so we'll put that off the next meeting. A and B, Dillon County Board of Appeals, District One, Randy Goins, District Six, excuse me, Randy Goins, District One.
I don't have any of them.
Okay, District Six, Robert Cowell.
I don't have anybody.
Okay, District Seven, Steve, right, I guess we'll put that off the next meeting, they're gonna look into that. We're down to, um, eight C, Dillon County Library Board of Trustees, District Six, real appointment of Gil Coleman, member at large.
You need two different motions, or do it one motion?
Yeah.
Two different motions.
Motion number...
Only one.
Gil Coleman.
Y'all make the motion, we're, we're appoint Gil Coleman.
Okay, is this second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And then also, we're having a real appointment of Thomas Stevens, he's a member at large.
I make the motion with real point, Tommy Stevens.
Is this second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, now, we get down to the United Executive Session, we have a motion going into the executive session.
Don't move.
This part you're picking at.
Don't move.
All in favor, raise your right hand.